...manager.
So you're ready to go?
I'm ready.
Very good. Well, it's after nine, so we probably ought to get going.
All right. So we have two items for you today. And first, we're going to let Dr. Dolores Craig-Morland talk about the Department of Corrections report. And you have got to receive the copy of that, and she's going to go over it for us. And then after that, we have about a five-minute discussion, and we're going to show you the new policy website on E-Line. Without further ado, doctor, if you could.
Okay. Where am I here? Oh. Excuse my clicking here. Thank you for your time this morning. I want to talk a bit about the program evaluation for the juvenile prevention and juvenile delinquency programs. Some of these are funded through your county crime prevention program, and the rest comes from the Kansas Department of Corrections juvenile services funding. You have already received this program report. Commissioners, if you didn't bring yours today and you want to look at it as we go through, Chris has some extra copies. We did find that we had to change page six, so we left out the latest data on that, so they wanted to put this in your webster. Sorry for the errata there. Okay, so I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. I'm using basically the same PowerPoint that I used for the presentation to Team Justice. It has a lot more detail than we really have time for this morning, so I'm going to kind of go lickety-split through it, but please feel free to ask any questions at any point. This is a one-year review, and we looked at the activity in the juvenile delinquency population. The activity numbers were mixed. The only area where they seem to continue to go up, at least last year, was in referrals to the juvenile correctional facilities. Otherwise, the activity is following a long-term trend of going down. And when it came to looking at racial and ethnic disparity, it was pretty much -- the numbers haven't changed that much. We have an over-representation in both Hispanics and in African-Americans. That's continued about the same numbers. We had two secondary prevention programs. Those are four at-risk. I see you're having trouble here. Do we need to do something different so you can see this? Or is everybody able to?
You're good.
Okay. When people start -- I'm a longtime professor. When people start looking around, I assume I've screwed up in some way, so you'll have to excuse me. Anyway, so the secondary programs we have are designed to work with at-risk kids. These are kids that have not yet gotten into trouble, and so what we were doing with those programs is offering them at elementary schools, ten different elementary schools for the PATHS program, and two for the middle school program, which is Pando. And one of the tertiary programs that works with kids that are already in a delinquent situation is City Works, and it stopped functioning at the end of last year. Detention advocacy services are funded both through your county prevention program for an emphasis on Hispanics that need assistance while they're going through the detention process. And then they also, using the state's money, they do legal services as well as a full range of case management. So -- and I'll go through each of the individual programs. I'm going to start my speed run now unless you have questions for me. I'm going to go into a little bit more about -- one of the things that's important to do in fielding these programs is to look at the actual needs of the kids here. So in looking at the evaluation of these programs, I thought it important to stop and say, okay, what are the needs that we have found to be prevalent here in Sedgwick County? And basically, what we have is a lot of kids who have what we would call cognitive behavioral issues. They don't -- they have antisocial thinking. They're not troubled necessarily by the same things that are kind of more pro-social in their orientation. They have school issues. What a shock, right? That's one of the areas where those antisocial behaviors might come to be seen. And then they have some issues with acquiring independent living skills. If you have the book and you look on page 47, you will see that -- you -- that page 47 has a display of the programs that we offer. It lists the various risk factors for juvenile delinquency, and it shows which areas our programs are concentrating in. And you'll see that there's a very good lineup between the risk factors that we know we have in this community and the risk factors that are addressed by our programs. So that's an important lineup. It means we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck because the things that we're providing services related to are the actual things that we need to work on. So the programs altogether, we have the two secondary programs. That's the Pando Initiative, and that's the middle school program that's designed to concentrate services for at-risk kids and their families. And the Mental Health Association does PATHS for Kids, which is a group experience in the elementary schools, and it teaches kids basic skills of coping and working together well and getting along and handling conflict well. So those are pretty important things. Then in the tertiary program area, we had City Works, which was designed to help some kids who had a significant delinquency history to begin a work experience of some kind. And they ended that program in December of 2016. The detention advocacy, there's two aspects of it. In both aspects, the most critical piece of that is the case management so that we bring to bear -- there's kind of a fact-finding process, and we bring to bear those resources that are going to make a difference for the kid. With the state-funded, that also provides legal services for kids who wouldn't otherwise have it, so it's a kind of a combination thing. Functional family therapy is an evidence-based program. It's been here in Sedgwick County since, yeah, 2000 -- I'm sorry, 1998 or '9, somewhere in there, when we first started having programs available here. It was one of the first ones. It's a very solid program. Learning the Ropes is done by Higher Ground. It's a lot more than the Ropes course. The Ropes course is part of it, but it's a substance abuse kind of thing, and it's very heavy on family engagement, and that's a very important piece. The McAdams Academy is offered typically. They do about 25, 26 kids each year, and those are kids that are either in long-term suspension or expulsion. And those kids can get into a lot of trouble if they don't have someone to engage them and keep them working towards educational goals. And the teen intervention program is evidence-based. It's focused around a restorative justice model where the youth actually take a good look at what they've done, and there's some work with advocacy there. Excuse me. I seem to have a dry throat this morning. So let's go through these individual programs. With the Pando Initiative, that's the one that I mentioned, is working with at-risk kids at middle schools. They work at Curtis and Hamilton. It's on page 54 and following in your book, if you're interested in looking at it. They served 86 youth. Ninety-nine percent were successful with predominantly moderate-to-high-risk youth. We want the programs, as much as possible, to work with moderate-to-high-risk youth because that's the place where we're going to make a difference. If we work with low-risk kids, they might actually do better if we leave them alone. So it's important that they focus in this direction, and they've been very successful at doing that. They did, however, have some, what I would call, maybe disappointing outcomes, so I want to work with them to establish more what I would call intermediate behavioral goals rather than simply looking at participation goals so that we see that we're actually getting the movement among the youth. So it's not -- yes, sir?
Can you be more specific on what disappointing aspects were?
Well, 30% of their students failed to improve absence records, and one of our goals is to get the kids there more. So having 30% fail to make an improvement in there is disappointing. It's not some big terrible thing. They didn't fail in some way other than the fact that we should be able to find a way to address that more effectively.
Well, I noticed the goal for the program is that the kids meet 65% of whatever the expectation is. To me, that seems -- that success of meeting 65%, I don't know. That doesn't seem very good to me, but...
Well, I can sympathize with that point. I think the thing that you have to recognize here is that each of these kids is going to have a very individualized set of goals, and 65% for some kids may be heavy lifting. You know, they may have to actually do a lot to meet that many goals. I mean, it depends on where the kid is at with their situation.
Well, you expect them to do a lot? I mean, is that what it's all about?
Okay, but I have a question about this effect-size estimate before you go on, because it's listed for all these. Some are negative, some are positive. What's that tell us?
Which page are you on?
Fifty-one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to be a cost-benefit. Is positive good or negative good?
Okay, the effect-size estimate is designed to give you -- with the negative ones here on the upper ones, that's designed to give you the estimate of how many people that participate in that program will actually experience the effect. The lower ones show -- these are actually reductions, too. They're indicating different things on those two numbers. The lower numbers are showing you how much delinquency changed because they're working with kids that are already delinquent. The upper ones are showing you the reduction in risk. So they both, even though some are negative and some are positive, they are both indicating improvements in the outcome for the kids.
So there's a 20% decrease in risk. 20%. Is 20% decrease good, bad?
That's very good. It's -- you have to -- programs can -- depending on the population they're working with, a 20% reduction in risk is a fairly significant thing because it's across an entire population. It's not Little Freddie or Johnny who's 20% changed. It's a population.
Good. I'd say you're right on it. The 20% -- 20% to 65 was good.
Well, a lot of the guidance for the information that's in there comes from the Washington State Institute on Public Policy, and these effect-size numbers are based on research about the change in an entire population. So that's why we wouldn't say if a kid only got 20% of their goals, we wouldn't be overly enthused, just as you said, 65% might not look that good. But this is a different situation. This is an entire population.
So how accurate is comparing the Washington State stuff to this? How comparable are they really comparable?
Yes, they are. They -- what we have done in the past, I did this maybe 10 years ago with some of these programs that have existed a long time, is we actually -- I did some training with them, and we actually looked at which elements of the program cause movement in the population they're working with, and we made sure in every one of ours that our programs actually have the elements that cause the movement. And the idea that that's happening is based on the research. So they did the research. We did a comparison to make sure that what they found was an element in our programs, or we didn't take any credit for the possibility that there could be an effect.
And they're still doing the same thing?
Yeah, it just keeps rolling along. Okay. That's the Pando Initiative. Okay to roll on? Okay. PATHS is the program that had the greatest expansion. In the last year, they served 1,010 students. Thirty percent growth in numbers served over time. They are working in 10 schools, 10 elementary schools, the Boys and Girls Club North, and the Evergreen and Colton Recreation Centers. So they have a large area of impact. They're working with kids that are defined at-risk primarily through the attendance areas that these schools serve and what the known conditions in those areas. They had a high rate of successful completion, and in this case, successful completion has to do with the fact that the kid attends the group that is indicated for them and makes movement on at least one goal. So 77% of those served were minority youth, which again helps us with dealing with racial and ethnic disparity. The one thing that they've been challenged by is getting parent engagement and -- or family engagement. And for parents to recognize kids' improvement in social skills, we need to refine their instrument they're using to measure that, but we also need to work on family engagement. City Works, as I indicated, they ceased to operate. The youth there were moderate to high-risk with a history of delinquent behavior. When it was in operation, the program had all their goals, with the exception of the percentage able to obtain meaningful employment. As you might imagine, for a young person who has an extensive history, perhaps even including gang involvement, getting meaningful employment is pretty challenging. City Works gives them a chance to get some experience and to move toward that goal, but it's a significant problem to get these kids involved in meaningful work. So the detention advocacy, this is on page 68. The detention advocacy that's funded through the state has three components. There's legal services, case management, and short-term services. The goal of all three of these is to make sure that no youth spends time in detention that's not completely necessary. I mean, there's no possibility -- if some service might make it possible for the youth to be released, then they go after that. They look at the family situation. They go through everything they can think of that might put enough conditions in place so that they could be safely released. The numbers served, pretty much it's determined by the case flow through the system. They serve -- they provide legal services for all the youth that don't have legal services. The case management is targeted to the kids who -- they do screenings of the kids that are in detention and collect up any services that might get them released. They fell short of meeting their target numbers for case management and for short-term services. They did have a significant number of legal cases, and the legal representation and support services are a vital part of the juvenile justice system. The program is encouraged to scrutinize and refine supervision practices so that their numbers reach a happy success level. Say happy. I'm not sure we're happy about anybody being in detention, but the idea is we want to be sure. Detention isn't going to improve the life experience or the way of thinking of a juvenile offender, so we don't want them in there other than to hold them in place so they don't commit another offense and/or they are able to appear for all their necessary court functions. The Sedgwick County Crime Prevention Fund has provided for detention advocacy services that are specifically targeted to the Hispanic youth. They have Spanish-speaking workers, and they work with that youth in particular. And they serve 27. Twenty-nine was the goal. It's pretty close. They serve 15 with short-term services. So this is just case management and short-term services. The legal services go through the other grant. They have -- one of their goals is to keep the detention stay below a certain level, and if you look at the numbers, you'll see it's well below the number that's a goal there. So -- and again, they were serving primarily moderate-to-high-risk youth, although the youth they serve is determined by who's in detention, so it isn't like they go out hunting elsewhere for their clientele. Functional family therapy, roughly two-thirds of those served were minority youth and their families. They served 98 clients, but they had a completion rate of 41, so that's not -- that's not great. So we want to look and see if they're getting the proper referrals. By that, I mean, are they actually getting people that will be able to have full engagement with this program? Because if they're not, we need to refine that process. So we're going to take a look at that and make sure that it's reasonable to expect them to be successful with the clients that they're taking. If I'm going too fast, tolerate me, otherwise I'm going to continue my speed trip here. Learning the Ropes, as I said before, there's a Ropes course. It's a substance abuse program. They served a total of 164 parents and youth in all phases of the program. The Ropes course is an add-on to an intensive substance abuse treatment program. These were moderate and high-risk youth. It's a well-designed program. It's been with us from the beginning. It serves its purpose quite well. The McAdams Academy, it's a program that works with students that have been expelled or have a long-term suspension. The effort here is to keep them engaged with school because they're not done with school, and they need that opportunity to continue with school. 68% of those completing the program were successful. Here, success means that they're making progress on their educational goals. Teen Intervention Program, the program has been funded since 1999. It's a cognitive behavioral approach. Again, they're having youth take a look at what they've done. Typically, these are not the most serious offenders, but they've in some way brought attention to themselves from the juvenile justice system. So the program, again, has had problems getting parents involved. You've heard me say that now a couple times. And I will tell you that one of the things I did in December was do a training, and that training was focused around the logic model. And then I did some training about how you assess the risks in an individual child and how that should influence the development of the program. On March 7th, we're going to do family engagement training, and that should give us an opportunity for these programs to refine the way that their program is delivered. That's what the logic model is all about. They structure -- they take a look at the insides, if you will, of their program and who they're serving, which activities are actually bringing to bear the bonus, if you will, from the program. The risk assessment is we want to be sure that everyone is focused on what exactly causes delinquency risk in these kids. And do we know it with Little Fred and Elmer and Bubba and whoever else? Do we know exactly what's producing risk for this kid so that what we do is exactly targeted? And the same thing when it comes to family engagement. We want to be sure that we have the greatest possible opportunity for families to be a resource to these programs and not just something they have to deal with. That's the speed version. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to do it.
We have any questions from Commissioner? Commissioner Enright?
Okay. Dr. Craig, is there -- what's the total number of youth that you serve? Is that -- or is that number even irrelevant?
It's in here. I don't know if I remember what page. It's about 15 -- it's about 1,500, I think. Yes, it's on page eight. There's a client served in state fiscal year 17, 1,643. Clients served through your Sedgwick County Crime Prevention Grants is 1,444, and clients served through the -- this would be the detention advocacy program would be 199. So we have some unable to unduplicate in there because some kids get served by two programs, and if one of the two programs is PATHS, we don't get the names there, so we just know the absolute number, because those are the little elementary school kids. It's a goodly number. You're getting a fair bit of activity for the funds that are provided.
I guess that's what I was kind of trying to evaluate, you know? Do we think we're getting our money's worth as far as what we're trying to accomplish?
I think you're definitely getting your money's worth in terms of the numbers that are served, in terms of adequate dealing with minority populations, adequate dealing with risks that are known to exist in this community. I'm with you as your consultant evaluator for this year, and part of my goal with this year is to have a really strong, in-depth look at every program, brainstorm sessions with them, make sure if there are any resources that might move them toward your goals, you know, further toward your goals, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that that happens.
And this whole program is focused on youth up to a certain age? Is there some age where they -- I mean, do we work with kids past 16, or do we work with young people, 22?
I think the -- I'm going to give you my best guess. I mean, we have the age breakdown in there, and I could go back and look at it, but I honestly didn't look back at it this morning. The only program that I know of that goes to kids that are like 17, 18 was City Works, and a lot of those kids, as I said, had a pretty extensive history of problems. We're concentrating the secondary programs by their very nature are working with small children. That's the elementary and middle school. I still consider them somewhat small, even though some of them are small. But the tertiary programs, you're going to find those are concentrated in the early years of adolescence.
Okay, and City Works dropped their program because they didn't have enough people or enough money, or it wasn't working well, or what happened there?
It was part of the budget adoption. It was a funding issue, and we -- of the programs that were being monitored, that was the program that scored the lowest. And so as we made budget reductions, that was one of the things that got caught up in the budget reduction.
Okay, so they fell out because they got cut in our budget? Okay.
And that's what I mentioned earlier, that it's hard for them to ring the bell, to get us excited about them when they are taking on probably one of the most difficult situations you can think of out there, which is a person with a kind of a checkered history looking for employment at a relatively young age. So it was very difficult for them to work with enough people and get enough success to be cost-effective. I mean, that's just the truth.
But so the focus is on leading to high-risk kids that are 15 years and under or so?
As a general rule, you're going to see occasionally there will be a reason for functional family therapy, for teen interv- functional family therapy, for teen intervention program, for one of the others to work with an older person. But that's not who generally is going to be the target because we're looking for the point where we can have the greatest life course impact.
Okay. Well, all this is reviewed by teen justice and seconded and whatever, whatever the process is and everybody's satisfied with what we're doing to this point, I guess.
They received the program review the end of November. And we had the presentation for the December teen justice meeting. They asked questions, they reviewed it. I think they're pretty happy with the direction we're taking, which is, it's not that anyone is in big trouble here. That wasn't what I was trying to convey. What I'm trying to convey is, it would appear to me that there could be some tightening up of things, if you will, if they have strategic training. So we've been very much on the path of doing that. Would you say that's correct, Eric?
Yeah, you know, this, these are modeled programs. A lot of them are modeled programs. And what ends up happening is sometimes there's a little drift that occurs. It's keeping them on target, on the focus of what they're supposed to be working on to make sure that they're in line and that we're getting our biggest bang for our buck and that we're getting the targeted, and they're meeting those target goals as they should. And so Dr. Craig has set to get, put together a very strategic plan of how to work with all of these programs to make sure they are on target. And that was what we're working on this year.
Okay, well, good. That answers my questions and that's what we want you to do is keep focused, keep on target, keep doing better than anybody else.
Other questions from the commissioners? Couple things. Is this just USD 259 kids or, because we're Sedgwick County? Do we look at kids in other districts?
I'm going to answer the best I can and then Glenda can fill in on that. When it comes to the target of the two secondary programs, those are clearly 259 goals. I mean, they're, but it's not just the school district. They're working with the kids at recreational centers as well as the Boys and Girls Club. But the things that are built into a school setting are focused here in 259. The programs, the other tertiary programs, those include kids from different school districts.
Okay, well, I know that it's a cost benefit, but, you know, their budget is three or four times our budget. I want to make sure that, that we're funding things that we really need to be funding and they need to be funding, things that they need to be funding. So.
I think it just-
I'm just not sure how we figure out what our responsibility is versus what USD 259's responsibility is.
I, I have no idea about what the possibilities would be of them funding something like this in the past. I know it's never been at the top of their priorities to work with us. These programs, even though they're being delivered in a school setting, are focused very definitely around delinquency risk. It's our way of trying to prevent this disease from spreading any further.
So we don't have delinquency in any other districts?
Yes, we do. And unfortunately, we place these, these two programs where we think the deepest wells of at-risk students are. And in this case, that is here in our city.
Okay, I understand. I just, I'm Sedgwick County and I want to make sure that we're taking care of all of our kids in Sedgwick County.
We have in the past. I did the program evaluation of this from 99 to 2013. And we did have a sixth grade center program, sixth grade attendance center program in Derby in the past. And we've had other things. Some of it has to do with partnerships between our providers and school districts. And it's not that anybody's done anything bad. It's just people move on and, and the programs understand very well that you want the biggest bang for your buck and that's here.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Dr. Craig. I appreciate it. Any other questions from anyone else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager?
All right, Elizabeth Biles will now walk us through the new policy website.
Good morning. Elizabeth Biles, Management Intern. You've got a couple things in front of you. So we're going to talk about the, a couple changes that we've made to the location of policies and also the way that policies are laid out. So in front of you, you have two policies. The top one should have been the Board of County Commissioners use of this room. And then you also have one called the Economic Development Database. So this is the old policy format. As we review policies, we will be moving them to the new policy format, which is what you see with the Economic Development Database example in front of you. And there are just some changes that we made to kind of make policies in general easier to navigate for our employees. So the top has changed a little bit. In some policies, there are a lot of enabling resolutions. And so we've tried to simplify that down so it's just the latest information about which resolution has authorized that policy, when it was last revised, who's responsible for maintaining that specific policy. And then also adding a box specifically so you can know what policy number it is inside the policy book, which now officially exists. So previously, county policies have been located in several different spots on E-line. We've gone through a process of corralling them all together, organizing them, and now they are all housed in one central location that you can access in three different locations. So no matter how you're used to finding county policies, you can still go that route to find the new policy book. So if you're familiar, previously you could click on Human Resources and then click on the Personnel Policing link and it would take you to just the Human Resource Policies. That is now one way you can get to the new policy book. The other ways, and I'll walk you through the book in a second. On the right-hand side, there was a county policy link. Now when you click on that, it takes you to the same location. And we made it very simple. There is now a direct link on the homepage on the very top that will take you directly to the county policies. And it's called county policies. So this is the new county policy book, as we call it. It is now organized into chapters. So for example, let's go to Finance. Chapter two is Finance. It has all policies that are organization-wide, maintained by the Finance Department. You can see that they're organized into subcategories. The policy number is clearly listed along with the policy name. And so if we open up one, you recently approved revisions to the Purchasing Card Policy. So if we click on that, it will now open up the most recent version of that policy. We've also added to some policies supplemental information. So Rick had asked that, because there were significant changes, we have kind of just a quick sheet to answer some of those questions that staff will have as they learn about the new purchasing card. And so that supplemental information is now then listed directly under the policy. So supplemental forms will also be attached directly under policies. To make it easier, if you're looking at a policy and it says you need to use this form, then that form will be the next item listed as well. Questions? I know I went through that pretty quickly.
Just, just to kind of summarize, Commissioner, we had, we had two issues with policies in the county. Number one, they were extremely difficult to find. They were all over E-line. And so part of what we have done, we've been the Policy Review Committee, which is made up of members organization-wide. We get together and we, Elizabeth explained, we've now centered them into one area where we can easily access them. Second issue with county policies historically, they're out there, nobody manages them, we don't look at them. And we found some policies from the 80s that had not even been revised or looked at. So we're getting rid of some of the old, making sure that everything here is relevant and updated, and then tried to simplify the form so it's easy for people, employees or whoever to get in and access policies, organization-wide policies to, to do business on a daily basis. So those were the two main things we tried to, to cure with this. This is a work in progress. We're now creating a, a policy to talk about how we're going to manage policies, which will go on the front end of this and hopefully try to make this just more organized and easy to maneuver for employees.
Which brings up really the third point, is continuity behind policy development. And that's what this Policy Review Committee and Development Committee will do. So three main things.
Right. And the, and the Policy Review Committee does two main things. They will look at old policies and refresh them. And then if there's a need for a new policy, they will craft, initiate, and create them that then filters through the manager's hands and then ultimately ends up in your shop for approval.
Questions?
Couple of questions. Chairman, I was just curious, I noticed there's some dates listed there on some of those policies. Is it intended to go get the rest of the dates for the other policies and populate that column fully or?
So you're correct. So for example, right here, it has dates. So when we moved all of the policies over, we didn't attach any revision dates. As policies are updated though, a date will be added. So you can see that it was updated December of 17. Some of these policies are quite old. For example, the one about how to use this boardroom was last revised in 89. And so we're just kind of starting with a clean slate. As the Policy Review Committee updates policies and they get updated in the book, then a new date will actually be attached. We are trying to establish rotations for how frequently certain types of policies need to be reviewed. And that way then we'll have dates to help hold the group accountable as well.
Okay. I'm just curious, but these older policies, are they like printed to PDFs so they can be searched and pull text out of them or are these like scanned?
They're all PD, they're all PDFs. So like they were saved from the Word document directly into a PDF. So for example, this one looks like it's, so I don't-
Is that an older, is that an older policy?
Yes, this is the one that's printed in front of you, the use of the commission room.
And are you able to select text within that or is it just a picture of a PDF? Is a PDF like a graphical representation or is that actually like a scan so you can select the words and?
That's a good question. Wes, can we, can we query a word if we go to the search site and decide?
That was my next question, yes.
Discipline, would that, that would bring you to disciplinary policies or?
Also would depend upon what, what PDF program you have loaded on your computer.
Well, generally speaking, I mean, you know, sometimes people scan a document, especially older PDFs or just basically just a picture of a document. It's not really a graphical, I'm sorry, it's not really a, a text document that you can search text within that document or grab text out of the document. So I would rather have it, I guess latest technology, have it printed to a PDF so it's a, a searchable document. And then again, I would also ask, I guess, the search feature that's built into this, it'd be nice if all those documents actually were printed to PDFs so the text was something that that search feature could go out there and actually look at every, every document within the document to find those interesting documents that maybe someone's looking for.
We'll work with IT on that.
Yeah, this is a great, great big step forward, but I hope we populate that date column and then get them all into a, a actual, I'm not sure what the right word would be, but get them into a, an actual text-based PDF format. Okay.
This is time, we have a meeting actually Thursday, we'll bring that up.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the commissioners? Okay, thank you. What else you have?
Round's complete.
That's it. Well, a couple things. First of all, do any of the other commissioners have anything? First of all, I'd love to say.
Yeah, I have some question about the email we got yesterday about Dr. Warwick testifying about adding some to the Schedule I deal.
That's on hold. It was kind of a last-minute thing. I don't know that we have time to talk through that before. I think that's filed on Wednesday, so it may be something that we, I mean, we're walking to talk about it, but I don't know if you want to come to consensus on that or if you want to let this-
Well, I would like some more information. One of my questions is, are, are we, are we testing for substances that are not illegal? That's something I would like.
In this particular case, in an autopsy situation, when they're looking for substances, they're aware of this substance. So they may be screening to see if that's present in the body of a, of an overdose victim or something. But this substance is not at this point illegal in the country, state by state. So if you'd like more information, I can have the doctor come sit down and just-
Well, on that, on that particular one, specifically, but in general, like what about the criminal case? I guess I want to note to what degree, it just came into my mind, that I, I guess it's, I just want to make sure or see if we're using resources to look for, when we are, things that aren't illegal and there's still how much, I mean, you know what I mean? This, we got War on Drugs, it's, it's spent a lot of money.
He can provide you with information on the things that they screen for routinely in overdose or other death situations. And I can't speak to that technical at this moment, so.
Okay. Well, I just want to share this so that maybe he can be prepared when he comes to talk so, you know, kind of just come on.
Is there any discussion amongst the other commissioners on whether he should testify or not? Is there any consensus on that?
We haven't discussed.
Again, this, this was a substance that in 2016, the DEA was going to attempt to schedule it as a Schedule I drug narcotic. They backed off of that because of local pressure and questions about whether there were legitimate uses. Since that time, they deferred to the FDA, who has begun to do some research and some, some fact-finding on that, those particular substances, which are plant-based substances. The plant comes from Asia and it has an opioid-type chemical effect. The FDA has done some testing. They are doing some intervention to try to prevent the substance from coming into the country. But at this point, it's not scheduled, it's not a legal drug or narcotic. And there's no specific federal legislation that I'm aware of that's prohibiting the drug coming in. It's coming in in forms of, like an herbal tea-type substance. So like I say, the FDA is trying to do some intervention, but I don't think it's been, on the federal level, it's not been outlawed. State by state, there's a handful of states that their legislators have scheduled this substance to prohibit it in their state, but it's very-
And one state like North Carolina was going to, but then changed and said it can't be used by anyone under 18.
Yeah.
Some people, there's been anecdotal evidence that some people use it to get off other narcotics and-
There is some scientific research that suggests that there are no legitimate medical uses, but then there's information that contradicts that. So it's really hitting this topic state by state. In this state, the KBI and some others are, legislation's been introduced in Topeka and they're going to testify on Wednesday. The KBI, probably Johnson County Lab, are probably going to testify requesting that it be scheduled. And they simply asked Dr. Warwick, as a toxicologist, as an expert in the field, to come and offer his, his input based on his scientific knowledge and his training. But again, the commission has not had time to listen.
See, what my concern is with, I mean, we have limited resources and we have lots of things that are a problem out there. And you can expand War on Drugs indefinitely, but do we want to spend it on something that, I mean, the federal government likes to, likes to regulate anything and everything. If it decides not to, I guess I'm a little hesitant and there's just some, I don't know, I think we might be jumping the gun on this.
So this is not his position to take a side. I think it's his position just to be a technical witness on that particular drug.
So he's supporting an, an additional schedule?
His testimony, he's encouraging, I'm just like written schedule.
Did he submit his written testimony?
He has not.
So it's probably too late, right?
It was supposed to be submitted, I think, yesterday, either late last day afternoon or this morning. I pulled him out too because we had questions here.
It's probably too late for him anyway.
Well, I still think it's, well, for me anyway, I guess some information, but-
We can talk with Jason about it today.
He'll keep coming up. I mean, I guess I'd like to be educated on that, I guess.
We can talk today.
I mean, you know, what sort of problems have we had specifically here in Kansas?
Jason and Scott may have more insight for us this afternoon on it.
I know we're running out of time. On the agenda today that we're going to go into on our board meeting, why for some reason there's not a legislative portion on it, but we're going to add that to, I, I think we need to talk about a couple things. One is whether or not that we want to add one thing to our legislative platform on supporting workforce training, development, recruitment programs that help fill the advanced manufacturing workforce pipeline, something to that effect. And we'll have to discuss that and decide what we want to do on that. The other thing is that we were in- The other thing is that we were in Topeka yesterday. And one of the concerns that legislators expressed, every single legislator that we talked to, was what is going to be cut as a result of the ongoing discussions with, with the funding of schools. And we may need to put out a letter saying that, hold us harmless, we cannot afford cuts. We can't absorb here at Sedgwick County cuts to our vital programs. So, we may need to send something up and we can discuss that during the legislative portion. But I wanted to put everybody on notice that we probably ought to talk about that in our future and get some kind of letter out that, that our, our funding for comm care for all of the different programs that we get funding out of the state, we can't afford cuts to those. And we need to send notice up to, to our legislators that we can't afford to, to absorb those cuts here in Sedgwick County. So, I know we're running out of time.
Just one thing I wanted to just to share with you all, that I plan to be in Topeka at nine-thirty tomorrow to testify on House Bill twenty-three thirty-three, which is about election audits. And since I've added, I, I'm the one that requested that be added to our platform and it was approved, I wanted to be there to testify in favor of the bill. There is actually three parts of the bill, but I'm going to testify on the audit part of the bill and encourage them to pass that. It's already passed the House. So, this is kind of the last step before it goes, hopefully to, you know, approval by the Senate and to the governor. But basically, just authorizes us to do a random audit on, on basically fall election, elections, I guess, so we can get our equipment validated, if you will, after the election. Verify that the electronic tally does its job. So, I wrote testimony, submitted that yesterday. I'm testifying as a commissioner, but I do, I do reference the legislative platform item of our, of our platform. So, I'll make that comment as well.
Is this a bill left, left over or from last?
It is. It passed one-hundred-and-twenty-four to zero in the House. And it's at the Senate right now.
Anything else?
Are we, are we still in conversation about code of ethics? Are we going to, is, is a staff meeting a perfect place to talk about that? Or what will we do with that?
Commissioner, I was with a couple of commissioners yesterday about that. I was actually going to do a two-two-one briefing. So, it has something that we want to run. And I've spoken with other counties that have some.
Resolution? All right. Okay. Anything else from the commissioners? Buck in? Nothing? Anyone else? Very good. Well, we need to get the room ready for our board meeting.
That's all.
Thank you.